I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Northfield Regular Council Meeting of June 14th, 2017. Could you all rise for the pledge, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Brett Summer. Hey, can we get the roll call, please?
Mayor Nieves?
Here.
Mr. Magistrelli?
Here.
Mr. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Dumsalsky?
Here.
Mr. Hips?
Here.
Ms. Noack?
Here.
Mr. Boytush is absent. Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Wasowski?
Here.
Sergeant Zolgus?
Here.
Here.
Chief Fuss?
Here.
Uh, Harold Walters is absent but is on his way. And I am present.
Okay, can we get approval of the minutes?
So moved?
Motion by Ms. Noack for approval of the minutes of May 10th, 2017. Regular council meetings are seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any questions, comments, amendments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed?
Abstaining.
The minutes are approved with Mr. Doherty abstaining. Everyone else in favor?
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address us at this time? Absolutely. Would you please come up to the podium, please? There should be a pen there and a book to sign in. Is there a pen there? And if you could, before starting, uh, say your name and address, please.
Okay. My name's Diana Johnson Starr and I live at 9252 Coventry Drive. And my issue here tonight is I have a new neighbor. And I do have his name and address. Oh, I'm sorry. Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, I have a new neighbor. He's been there for, since spring. And at the time that he moved in, he proceeded to build what is now a professional, um, baseball cage where you would practice baseball. And, uh, I've concerned about this before with Jason. And I know he's taken issue with the owner. But now it's become a safety issue. The balls are coming out. They're hard balls. And they're coming out of the, um, baseball cage, whatever you want to call it. And last night, it, um, was hit so hard that it went across the street approximately from my house to the house across the street and to their yard, which I don't know how you would gauge that, but that was quite a distance. And I didn't notice it at first because I saw a lady outside. She was looking for something. And I asked her, can I help you? I thought she had lost a pet. And she said she was looking for a baseball. And she looked around for quite some time and didn't find it. In the meantime, I had company that pulled into the driveway. And the lady got out of her car. And another ball just missed her. And after the two happenings of last night, I have decided I had to come here to voice my opinion. This is very dangerous. I know in order for that ball to go to the neighbors across the street, which his land kind of goes uphill, that it had to be going very fast. And he's teaching in the backyard. And it's right next to my patio. And I'm hearing all kinds of baseball activity. I'm hearing terrible cracking of a hard ball. It's not soft balls. So anyway, last night, the neighbor across the street came over. I had went over to his house and I said, "If you're mowing the lawn and you see a hard ball, I would like to have that retrieved because we have an issue with our neighbor." And in the meantime, like I said before, the lady had come into my house. And, um, she had a terrible look on her face. And I said, "What's wrong? What happened?" And she said, "I almost got hit by a hard ball that came through your, past your car, which my car is parked there to be hit." So I went outside. Sure enough, the ball was there. In the meantime, the neighbor found the other ball. And he brought it over to me. So I now have possession of the two hard balls to prove that this is something that we need to address. It's not just a noise issue or, uh, maybe a fence that's too high or whatever you want to call it. A business that's being done inappropriately. And he's right on the corner lot and the playground is right across the street.
I know exactly the house you're talking about. I live on your street, so, um, I know what you're talking about. I know the law director has spent some time on this.
Yeah, Ms. Starr, I, the, um, zoning inspector did bring it to my attention. I did go out to the property with him. We reviewed it. We did a lot of research and, you know, there was really, you know, the way it was set up, there's really no code provisions right now that are on the books that are violated. I had concerns with the height of the batting cage and talked to him about, you know, reducing the height so that it was lower than the roof level. Um, I don't know if he's made any changes as far as that. I mean, he told me he was going to do that. I, you know, I haven't been out there since to know if that was, that was actually done. Um, we were told that he's using, he's not using hard balls. He's using softer balls that don't make any noise. So if that's not the case, that's obviously a problem. If it's the noise as such, I mean, if there's people out there, you know, playing that, that type of noise like any other people that would be in their backyard, you know, doing something, I don't see if that is being a problem. But if it's the repetitive, you know, noise from the batting machine and balls hitting the bat, I can see that being a problem. And the concern is with the balls going off the premises is very concerning because that's very dangerous. And we will speak to him immediately about that. And if that's going to be the case, he certainly needs to be shut down if, uh,
I don't have particularly a problem with the noise. I've learned how to adjust noise in my lifetime. I've never complained about barking dogs or anything. I have wonderful neighbors. My concern is that if two balls left that area and they're hard balls and they left very, with forceful, this is an adult and I've seen them swing. This is adults that are taking lessons there from the owner. And if somebody gets hit on my property, then I'm responsible for that also. And that really concerns me. And the lady that was hit is a pregnant woman. And if he hit her, it could be two lives, not just one. So that is my concern here, why I'm here tonight. It's not so much an issue as noise. I can tolerate noise. I purposely moved there because I love the playground. I love the activity. I love the noise. I love this area. And the mayor, you've done a wonderful job with Northfield Village. I have lived here for many years. I've lived in Northfield Center. I've moved back to the village. So I really do not have any complaints, except I have a safety issue. And I really feel that that needs to be addressed before something terrible happens.
Did you bring the balls with you tonight?
Uh, you know, I have them, but I left them at home.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like to see you because-
I made a joke about that too, but-
Um, and Mr. Walters is here because he, he met a representation, representation to us that he's using very soft balls to try to cut down the noise.
No, I do have them and they were retrieved, like I said, by, uh, the neighbor across the street. Uh, and I know Jason has been very kind. And I really don't have a complaint other than this is a safety issue. And I understand that there are certain codes that he was able to get by and they need to be changed. And other than that, I just hope that you can do something about the safety issue. I do have children that play in my backyard. And this is right next to where I am also.
No, we understand. Jason, I don't know if you heard the news, but balls are leaving the batting cage, flying out under adjoining properties. So it's obviously a dangerous situation.
Okay. The gentleman has not been truthful when he moved in. He had told me one thing and ended up doing another. So I do question his integrity. And, um, I know Jason and I had talked. And I felt that Jason was very fair to me and was fair to the gentleman and did his job well. And like I said, my only complaint is a safety issue.
Good. Thanks for coming. We'll take care of it.
Does anyone else in the audience have anything for us tonight? Hearing none, moving on. Absolutely.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I stop by tomorrow and get one of them?
You can have the both.
Okay.
That'd be fine, I'll be home.
Okay.
Okay. Reports of the municipal officers. The mayor would like to report that, um, uh, the law director and myself are going to be meeting, um, with the county regarding, um, a hotel, um, on the track property. So we'll be meeting with them tomorrow. Um, also, we received, uh, nine resumes, uh, for the part-time, um, position here in the office. So, and we'll be, uh, conducting interviews, myself and the HR director, um, Thursday, Friday next week. And that concludes my report. Moving on to finance director, Tricia.
Um, at everyone's seats this evening, you should have received the, um, May 2017 month-end reconciliation. Would like a motion, um, for acknowledgement of receipt of the, um, month-end reconciliation for May.
Motion.
Second.
Excuse me. Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Dumsalsky. Any questions? All in favor of the motion acknowledging acceptance?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Motion passes.
I have a written report, so I'm, I'm not really going to go into much detail. Um, there's one thing that I wanted to, uh, bring up, and that is, um, the Rita information that you received at your seats. The Regional Income Tax, uh, Agency is urging the mayor and council to call Senator Frank LaRose in opposition to amend, to an amendment for House Bill 49, which is the bu, the budget bill for the state. Um, it takes away the village's administrative control and authority to decide whom net profit tax returns are filed with. Um, I have the contact information. This is kind of a big deal, um, because we would lose control over penalties and interest. And everything that I, um, I gave you the handout that they actually sent to me. So if you could look that over and make a phone call, that would be much appreciated. It will affect the revenue of the village, I would assume, as we have one, um, more than one, um, net profit returns that are filed. Um, let's see, the tax budget for 2018 will be on the agenda for the next meeting. And, um, regarding the amendments to the appropriations and, let me find it here, and transfers, um, there's just, um, one amendment to the earned benefit payments. And that was for the retirement payout to the two officers that retired earlier in the year. It was a nominal amount. Um, and then the SEMNR fund needs a transfer for $55,000 to cover the engineering expenses. And the police pension, uh, is a regular, it's going to be a regular transfer, um, to pay the employer portion of the police pensions. And I believe that's all I have.
Ms. Graus, do you need a motion for that right now or?
For?
For the longevity? We don't need, that's just-
Oh, no, that's just going to be in the legislation tonight.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, the engineer, Mr. Wasowski.
The Ledge Road, um, Phase 1 construction, um, as I mentioned last month, we asked Lockhart to come back and, uh, do some touch-up work. He did come back and did the reseating of the areas. Um, on the north side of the road, it looks fine as far as I'm concerned. The south side, um, I don't think we're going to be able to, uh, make Mr. Salami happy unless it's a golf course. And, um, frankly, we're not getting carried away with ourselves in making it a golf course over there. So, uh, we reseeded again and that's going to be it for that. Uh, the contractor still has to come back and, uh, uh, replace the cracked concrete slabs, reseal some joints and, uh, clean out the sewers. I'm holding approximately eight, $82,000 of his money right now. So I assume he'll be back. He's, he's told me a couple of times now he, uh, he was going to be back. Uh, last week was the latest one to do the concrete. But he does complain about the weather, that, uh, he has other jobs going and the rains slowing him down and everything. So we'll, we'll see in the next month or so what happens there. Presidential subdivision project, uh, it was advertised for bids last Monday, last two Mondays, June 5th and June 12th. Bid opening is scheduled for 4:00 PM on Thursday, June 29th at the village hall. I need either Jason or Chris or Tricia to be here while I'm here. With, so we have at least two people here when the bids are open. As of today, only three companies have purchased bid plans, um, which is less than I expected at this point. The estimated construction cost with the added storm surge in Kennedy and the recycled payment for all presidential subdivision streets is 1.192 million. And we'll have to have a special council meeting in early July if we do receive a, a low bid, uh, in order to pass that so we can get moving on the, uh, project. We won't get our authorization from the state. Last year it came on, actually, July 6th. It was late last year. Normally it comes July 3rd. I'm, I'm assuming about the same time this year since the fourth falls on a Tuesday. They mail them out July 1st normally. So I'm figuring either 5th or 6th we'll get our authorization. The storm drain stenciling and rainbow, rain barrel installation program. We're committed to do storm drain stenciling this year. And also to do a rain barrel installation programs as part of the EPA, um, storm order program, which we're a part of with the county. Um, I've talked to Lawrence School in Sagamore Hills and, uh, they seem really happy about this. Uh, they're, uh, they're all for coming out here and stenciling these things. But we know our service department out there to kind of keep track of the kids and don't get hurt because the basins are right around the street, of course. Um, I told them we'd set up in mid-June when the kids get back to school. These are high school kids there, so they ought to have some sense and hopefully not get run over out, out in the street. Um, the rain barrel program's a little bit more complicated. We do have a few homeowners in Northfield that do have rain barrels now. When you put the rain barrel in, you can get a 25% discount on your storm order bill from the regional sewer district. So there's some advantage in putting them in. But you have to pay for the rain barrel. And you have to realize how to put, they're not very complicated to put in, but, uh, the, the storm order people think we have to train them on how to put these rain barrels in. So what they want to do is, uh, set up a class and have the people who are going to put rain barrels in come to the class and have their rain barrel there at the class. Yes. And we, and we can show them how to hook it up to a downspout and how to, uh, have the pipe going out of it and, uh, where to exit the pipe to or the hose to. Um, so that's a logistics problem of first getting the people there who want to do it. And secondly, having their barrel. Now, the stormwater people thought we should be purchasing the barrels, barrels and they can buy them from us. I'm totally against that. I think they should be purchasing the barrels and they can either have them delivered here or, or bring them here in their car. And, uh, that way we're not handling a bunch of money as a, a second party. And if somebody doesn't show up, we get stuck with, um, a couple of rain barrels that we don't want. So we should advertise this on our, um, internet site. And we should also try to put something in the local paper that we're going to have this. And we have to figure out what date we can do it. And, uh, it'll probably done, it's a service department on Ledge. It'll be the best place to do it.
Rich, is there a deadline on this?
It has to be done this year.
Just by the end of the year?
Yeah. But I don't think we're going to be doing it in November. So, uh, yeah. Both programs, every year we have to do at least one, uh, thing. We didn't do anything last year, so we're going to do two this year. And every year now, uh, at least for the next four years, we have to do something else. And there's a whole group of things we get to pick from, but, um, these are actually the two easiest things to do. So, um, it'll get harder as we go along on doing stuff, uh, that meet our requirements. So, um, if we can get that in our, on our website and, um, get something in the paper about that, uh, we, we can figure out, talk to Jason and figure out a date when we can do this. We'll probably have to buy one rain barrel for the village to have it up there all times in case somebody comes in three months from now and decides to do it. He doesn't know what to do. He can just come on over. We can show them individually if we have to. The, um, 2018 Ohio Public Works Commission Issue 1 applications. I'm currently working, continually working on these plans and specs for the Halton Road reconstruction and the three new traffic signals, uh, three traffic signals on State Route 8 at, uh, Halton, Maple and the fire station. That all has to be submitted, uh, by noon on July 7th. We'll be submitting two applications, one for a 50% grant. And one for, um, a 90% loan, uh, for 30 years at 0%. And what I think is going to happen this year is Akron's going to ask for Phase 2 of the Main Street project. Last year, they took 100% of the money for Phase 1 of the Main Street project. And there's two phases. So I assume they're going to take 100% of the grant money. For, you know, we were the number one rated project last year, uh, for the grant money for, uh, Ledge Road. And they filed an appeal and, uh, they got bumped ahead of us on the appeal and took all the money. So I think the same thing's going to happen this year. Uh, so, but, but the loan, I think we have a, a fairly good chance of getting the loan, yes. Uh, council will have to pass a resolution approving the supplemental of the projects at the next council meeting in June. I have to have the legislation to submit the application. And I can't do the legislation until I get a cost figure and that. So I'll have it, uh, on the 26th of June, I'll put it in your boxes. And, um, hopefully you'll pass it, uh, at Wednesday. And the mayor and finance director have a bunch of documents to sign with that application. So all of those, first week in July, your signature. And one other thing, I attended the annual, um, community development block grant application meeting. It's mandatory to go to these if you want to apply for a community development block grant. Last year, we received $50,000 for the sidewalk for Ledge Road Phase 1 to get to the school. Um, I would like to submit a grant for $50,000 for the sidewalk in front of the school where there's no sidewalk now to do that. I don't know if we'll get it. So they usually, the, the grants are all small grants and they try to s- spread it around the county. So trying to get one, two years in a row may not work, but I think it's worth a shot, uh, to try to get that. Because I claim, you know, we're helping not only Nordonia, not only Northfield, we're helping Macedonia kids also since they travel that route. So hopefully, um, we'll get something out of that. And that's my report.
Rich, um, I just wanted to let you know that I have spoken to the two residents that had, that were part of the Ledge Road. And, um, they just wanted me to let you know how much they appreciated the friendliness of all the construction crew and, um, the way that they were willing to work with the residents at that particular time. And one of the ladies that had her yard done last week, she was very happy, so.
Okay, which yard did we do last week?
We did both.
Both of them?
Not Exton's, the other one.
Yeah.
That, that's the one that-
Kubik?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So I just wanted to let you know that they were very appreciative and they, they really liked the way it was handled.
Yeah, I, I thought the construction crew did work very nicely with everybody. They were, they were, I thought, a pleasant group to work with, so.
Okay. Moving on to the law director, Mr. Bryan.
Thank you, mayor. First, we have, uh, two months of mayor's court monthly dispersal reports, uh, for acceptance. The first report is the April 2017 report. Um, total to be dispersed, $12,005.92. $1,414 due to the state. $50 to Stowe Municipal Court. $27 to the City of Stowe. $63.10 for restitution. And total retained by the village, $10,451.82. Is there a motion for acceptance?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Mr. Hips. Any questions? All in favor of acceptance?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Next is the dispersal report for May 2017. Total to be dispersed, $14,245.15. Total due to state, $1,301.50. $50 due to Stowe Municipal Court. $31.50 to the City of Stowe. $408.22 for restitution. Total due to the village, $12,453.93. Is there a motion for acceptance?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? And, uh, next, um, the village entered into an agreement with, uh, Warren Olazinski, the owner of Gyro Auto Repair and the property to lease for $1 a year. The, just the edge of the property on the corner of Ledge Road and, um, Northfield Road. And the village has gone and put up a "Welcome to Northfield" sign. Um, it's, you know, essentially, we wanted to make the gateway to the bus, business district look good. There's been some planting done around that and, uh, we're trying to take care of it and make, make it look good. So, um, just wanted to let everyone know that happened and we wanted to get things going. It was effective, uh, June 1st. And I would like council just to make a motion and approve that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Mr. Hips. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Thank you. And next, uh, we had the request for qualifications for the overlay district. We did receive four timely responses from four qualified firms. North Star Planning and Design of Cleveland Heights. OHM Advisors of Cleveland. Elin Consulting of Painesville and Julie Lindner from Hudson. So, um, I, the plan would be to, uh, interview all four, um, firms and, uh, we, we would need a committee to do that. Um, I talked to Mr. Hips and our feeling is probably a committee of three people would be probably something that's workable and reasonable, um, to set up a time and interview the candidates, get their ideas and input. And then at some point, the committee, the committee would rank the candidates in order of preference. And then, at that point, the first firm, the village would negotiate with them as to the scope of services for the project as far as what the village wants done, make sure the expectations are the same for the firm and try to negotiate a contract for a fee. And if we can come to an agreement with the top rated firm, great. And if not, we move on to the second firm and down the line until we're happy with an agreement. So, Mr. Hips, does that sound what you're thinking? I mean, so, I don't know.
Sounds perfect.
Do you want to ask for volunteers for your committee or?
Sure. That'd be preferred if anybody wants to be on the committee.
I'm assuming you're one?
One or the head of the three.
Okay.
Mr. Hips, when do we plan on interviewing?
Soon as availability.
Yeah, I would like to volunteer could be part of it, but my work schedule is just so tight right now. I never know till that, the previous day if I'm working Saturday, Sunday, Monday or, everything's late. If you get three or you get two and I can make it, I'd be an alternate to come in if we need to fill that space. But right now I can't commit with my schedule.
I'm willing to be a part of that.
Okay. Mayor, is that something you're interested in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be a part of it too.
Okay, we three, and ultimately council's going to have to approve everything and council will be updated and given a presentation as to how the committee came to its decision and ultimately council will have to approve, you know, going forward. So, it's, you will have plenty of opportunity to weigh in and participate. Thank you. All right, we'll work on with the committee coming up with a date sometime in the reasonable future to meet. It might be good to have kind of a first meeting to plan out the committee as far as procedures, how they would go forward. I mean, that can be done reasonably quickly and then we'll come up with a different date to actually have the candidates come in. I can reach out to the candidates and tell them we've received their submissions and we're going to be working on scheduling an interview as soon as we can. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Anything to add, Mr. Hips?
Sounds like a good approach and just be doing your homework on questions you think you're going to want, going to want to ask the candidates.
Okay. All right, moving on to department heads. Officer in charge, Sergeant John Zolgus.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone has a copy of my report for the month of May. Also attached was the items that we wanted to sell on govdeals.com. If Mrs. Dumsalsky would make a motion, the council passed that so we can move forward with selling those items.
Absolutely, I'd like to make a motion. Sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Dumsalsky, seconded by Mr. Doherty. Any questions? All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
I would also, just like later on, there's going to be legislation to pass for Craig Wilson to become a full-time police officer. I just wanted to touch a little bit more than what's written down. Craig worked for us for a couple of years. He left us part-time and went to Maple Heights full-time. Since being on Maple Heights Police Department full-time for the past two years, he's been a member of their SWAT team. He's experienced a lot of things that have happened over there, shootings, stabbings. He's got some first, good firsthand knowledge of how to handle some, some of those types of incidences and I think he'll be a good asset to our police department. I just wanted to make those couple of comments to add to that. And also the one was the parking ordinance that Mr. Bryan had created for us for the parking on the grassy areas of the municipal properties, which was needed because the other one only covered residential. That's all I have.
Will we be swearing again publicly?
Disagree with that. I don't know, how are we going to handle the swearing again?
Craig just asked if he could be sworn in the, in the mayor's office unless the council, the mayor chooses otherwise.
And do we figure out when he's going to be able to start full-time or?
He's got to give his two-week notice to Maple Heights. Our new schedule starts July 9th. So, that's probably when I would put him on on July 9th.
Good, great.
Did you have anything else? Yeah, I thought you were, okay.
Well, the parking, I mean, I, I, it didn't discover private property, but it said Trelawny and there was an issue, I guess, with some people bringing up whether the property in front of the park is technically a Trelawny or...
Right. Okay.
So, we corrected that and we'll discuss that legislative portion.
John, do you also want to, you know, I kind of want to touch on what we've talked about for the past couple of weeks here as updating some of the ordinances for the police department.
Yeah, there's actually Sergeant Zajac and I think Officer Zombach are going to be going through some of the other ordinances that don't, how do I say the best way to say it? That kind of don't meet our criteria to actually cite people. One of them, I believe Sergeant Zajac was the garbage can ordinance that we have to look at. And I think there was a couple of other obscure ones that we don't use a lot. So, in the future, we may be coming to ask to change more of those types of ordinances. Just so they fit so that if we, we run across having to cite somebody, we're 110% in the right and it doesn't leave anything open to any type of interpretation.
Excuse me, John, is, that adds up to three officers that are coming back to the department in recent months? Or is that two?
Two months. Officer Beltrami and then Officer Wilson. I have another one that would like to come back, Officers Adlicky from Walton Hills.
Okay.
Which he's full-time over there and he's asked if he could come back, either on a part-time or a full-time basis. So, we're looking into that now and we'll do some background work and see what's the best option for us.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the fire chief. Mr. Bus.
Good evening, council, mayor. Just going to start with the fire hydrants in Northfield were all flushed in May. Cleveland Water has replaced all but two of them, so all the hydrants but two in the town should be functional and working properly. So, they did complete that. I think they were motivated by the mayor to get that project done. It's always hard for us to get them out here and get Cleveland Water to do things, but they seem to have been really working hard the past few weeks to get them done and they've been done. We still do have smoke detectors available at the fire department. So, if you know of any residents or elderly residents that might not get out too much in your wards, maybe ask if they have them. I'd like to get them out there if there's people that need them, I want them out there in their homes. And then, just the last thing I have to touch on is the mayor, Sergeant Zolgus and Lieutenant Mackey. Last week we took a trip down to Wooster to look at a police fire station that's, that was designed and built by Bowen Associates who's doing our planning process. And they're at the final step of the planning process there. We're kind of in the middle. Tomorrow we're going to be looking at workspaces that administration needs, police needs, fire needs. But it was kind of nice to go to a facility that was done with the company, look at different work areas, different spaces, how they use spaces. And I think we were all pretty pleased on what we saw in the cost of the facility. It was a, it was a 30,000 square foot facility and it was about a $7 million project. And there was more space there than we could believe. I think everyone was thinking it was about a $15, $16 million project. So, as we go forward, I think it gave everyone the idea, there's a lot we're going to be able to do and it may not be the price tag some people thought it would be to do certain projects. And I, it was a good field trip, I think, for us all to go on. So, we're meeting again tomorrow to keep that process going forward. Hopefully at some time in September, there'll be information to bring to council as far as different concepts of what we could do in the village and different plans and go forward from there. That's all I have.
Okay, moving on to service building superintendent, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, mayor, council. I have a few things. Well, one, the fire hydrant restoration, as you might have seen, we have started painting the fire hydrants, the ones that Chief was just talking about that have been replaced, wouldn't need to be sandblasted or anything or prepped. They come primed. We did paint those and then any others that didn't need to be sandblasted. I think we have a few left to do. But the rest will need the sandblasting. And I am requesting that council please make a motion to pass for Mr. T. Sandblasting to sandblast the fire hydrants. They do charge us $145 each, not to exceed $25,375. The initial count was with fire hydrants that were old and before they were replaced and we were able to take much, so it's definitely going to be, it's looking like somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 less than the figure there with the ones that we are able to paint now.
Jason, you need a motion for that?
Yes, I do.
So, moved?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any discussion?
Is that both sides of the street? Both sides of the east?
We're going to do all the village hydrants. The initial talk was to just cover the east side, but after starting them the mayor definitely doesn't want to see one side, one color and the other. So, we are going to go ahead and get them all done and as quick as possible. But we will need to get sandblasting as quick as possible. There is roughly, it's, I think this number was at 185 hydrants. So, we have, we have a few to paint. So, they're going to need to be primed and we'll have a priming crew go and then we'll have the paint crew right behind them, you know, like the next day. So, but they have to be primed as basically as they're leaving the hydrants. So, otherwise the rust process starts immediately, so.
Good, anybody else? All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Flag poles, we have changed the flag pole. A lot of the poles were starting to get damaged and beat up. If you've noticed, the prior flag poles we had were shorter and they got caught up on the poles a lot. I think once in a while we're still getting a snag, but we went to a six-foot pole hoping to change the, the distance from the flag to the pole and hoping that it wouldn't snag as much, which it seems to be helping, which will cut down on how many flags we got to buy per year and so on. So, we have replaced them all. I don't know why, but the six-foot pole is $2 less than the five-foot pole. So, it wasn't the case last time. So, they've made it even easier decision to do. So, it does seem to be helping. Lawn maintenance, our crews are currently taking, maintaining 30 vacant properties. So, we have 30, actually I think two more came in after I wrote this that we have found vacant and not being maintained. It takes, it, once we can put a notice to these properties, it takes 10 days before we can touch them. So, a lot of times they're already at the eight inches or more and then, you know, realizing that we do, I can't go immediately until we know we've gone through the ordinance as it states. So, on the vacancies, we'll send what we can find through the county website, you know, as an owner. But we also post the property and, you know, they show up to their property or whatnot. They'll see that it is posted and if it's not taken care of in that timeframe, then we go ahead and start taking care of the property. Generally, it's about two to three weeks at this point in time that, before we cut it again, just because you got to give them time and, you know, the ordinance is actually at eight inches. So, but it does take some time to get these properties taken care of. So, along with some other things that the crews are doing. I don't think many people realize how many properties that are vacant in the town. But currently, at this point, it was 30 and again, I think that we're at 32 as of the end of the day today. Potholes, we have patched the majority of our potholes. The biggest area was the presidential's and I, you know, every day we'd probably pop it up some more. We haven't stopped. We're using the coal patch. We're not getting into tearing anything up or anything, knowing that we are going to be replacing the asphalt back there. So, again, anybody that should have an issue or see an issue in their ward or whatnot, have our residents that have concerns, just please let me know and we'll get them taken care of as soon as possible. The sewer camera truck, it's, it's up and running. So, we, it seems to be a pretty good outfit. Rich was with us, was that Monday, Rich?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Rich, we had to film for him. He spent probably half a day with us filming. Again, I can't say it's a, it's a great asset to the town to have that and it works great. We're still learning it a little bit. There's some things that take us a little more time to get adjusted to, but it is, it is a great purchase. Magnolia curb project, here it says it was, it did start today as I said in the report. I didn't get any negative feedback while I was out there other than one resident said, "You're going to get nothing but complaints now that people can't pull off into their yards." Most of the complaints we got were people pulling off into yards. So, I'm hoping that it deters that. But, you know, as I said before, the road was designed to have a curb. It just never happened back in 92. The one thing is the company that is doing it in Mid-Ohio, they actually, the curb machine they're using, they bought from us in our auction back in 1996. So, yeah, it's funny. I, I, I didn't want to get rid of that thing back then, but anyhow, it works well. I watched it today, it's, it's doing a good job. There is, you know, one resident did respond to the letter of a concern, you know, their area and the way the curb might affect it. And I assured them that we'll take care of it the best we can, as quick as we can. Again, once we backfill that curb and then we grade these yards and plant grass, I think over the year we'll watch to see if there's any major problems and we'll have to just address them. It is a change. A lot of the yards are higher already than the road, so shouldn't cause too much issue. But the lower yards, it may. We're trying to make sure any yard drains that are close to the road, that road water was definitely going to, we're leaving openings for that so we don't stop that and end up having too many bird baths. You are locking the water in from going off the sides of the roads now, but also we're hoping it drains to the basins. We had some areas that weren't done to our liking and when the road was paved as we addressed. But we did have two residents that had a rather large approach to their driveway, you know, that was taken care of by reducing the, lowering their concrete aprons and making it towards a better, which I haven't ever took a complaint from any of those residents. So, I, I think we're doing all right there. But now we just got to make sure water and drainage is happening properly and then hopefully we don't get anything out of that. Lot striping, we have contracted United Striping Service to stripe Smith Park, Huntington Park, Fire Department and Ledge Road Service Department at a cost of $1,035. I thought it was a very fair price to do all those areas. So, that should be happening here in the next couple of weeks. They are, they have a lot of projects going and as soon as they can get to us, they will. Ledge Road, Route Eight, signs which Brad had brought up. Mayor took a few of the guys, they got that done rather quick. June 1st came around and he was sitting down there at the service department waiting for everybody to get there, grab the shovels and go. So, he had a lot of fun. It does look good. We have taken some compliments. Even Howard sent me a text saying how good it looks. So, Howard Chaffron, so I'm glad he likes it. The village, going on the village beautification program that mayor has started, he, he's been getting the crews out there with him and... that Mayor has started, he, he's been getting the crews out there with him and doing a lot of like plantings and landscaping, et cetera. May cleanup, the annual program, uh, I think was a, again, a, a success. Our residents seem to truly appreciate the program and they do take advantage of having the dumpsters and the shred day and what the, we collected forty-nine tons of waste at, uh, Houghton Road dumpsters, twenty-seven tons of waste at the Chestnut dumpster, there was only one there, and forty-two tons of waste at Ledge Road dumpsters. Grand total of a hundred and eighteen tons we took in this year, uh, during that one month. Um, so, you know, it was used. I, every time I spot checked somebody that didn't look familiar to me, I'd never caught anybody that wasn't a resident. I didn't hear from any of our officers catching anybody that wasn't a resident, so I'm assuming that all came from our village. I would have to assume that someone snuck in somewhere, but, um, I'm hoping not, but either way, it, it, you know, if you're getting rid of that much waste in the town, it's truly helps, so. Uh, the point of sale inspections, to date I've done, uh, forty-five point of sales, uh, from January to now. Uh, of those forty-five, twenty-eight of those properties have sold, so. Um, and then the property violations, we currently have nineteen property violations pending. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Question slash comment on the, the dumpster collection. Uh, living next to it, I see that there's a lot of tree debris that goes into those dumpsters. Do you think we could consider next year potentially having the sewer plant property be vegetation-only dump and then bring in like a tub grinder to keep the actual compostables out of those bins at the service departments? It just seems that it gets full branches, then you have to go out with the labor and to crush it down.
Well, even the other stuff, but I mean, here, it, it just opens up some other, one, we'd have to constantly make sure people are taking that stuff down, which a lot of this happens after hours, as you, I'm sure know. Um, so that stands in there. I mean, I'm not gonna ask the officers to stand down there and, you know, unless we man it until like nine P.M., um, I'm not opposed to it. The tump grinding part of it though, that, that, that can be expensive. So, um, I think the alternative to that is to look into chipping program, which we have discussed for years. It brings on a whole nother program and a whole nother machine and...
I've heard from another service department that you really don't wanna take that on.
I don't.
It's dangerous. It's really dangerous for the men. Like, it's, it's one of the highest injuries that they have on their department is actually.
The only, the only other thing you can do is we can hire like a Davy Tree or one of these companies to come through once a year and do that, maybe in the month of May. We can look in to see what that would cost and that might be an option and I, it might be cheaper than getting a tub grinder here. Um, I agree with you, but I also think that at times that the village can use the, not the mulch, but the, uh, chipper, but we also could go rent a smaller one, but, um...
Problem with the tub grinder is they're gonna expect to have workload of a full day to bring that in, so.
Yeah, I don't know that we get that much. It, it, it may be a, an option if, if we're letting people know, hey, you get the branches to the street, we have this service coming through, maybe it's one week of May, and if they can give us a quote on that, you know, that's something that we can explore.
Something, yeah.
Okay.
I just don't like seeing all the tree debris filled the dumpster.
It does, it does.
Where you actually have more debris that could go in that isn't tree.
Yeah, either way, we're, we're paying. It might be cheaper that way.
I, I don't know which.
But it may, it may have people tend to do more trimming of the trees, which is an issue.
Or, or if it's just open year-round down there for people to put their debris and then it's a yearly, just we grind it and deal with it that way? I, I don't know.
We, we can look at that, but it's, there's a lot of options there, but I, I, I think either one, we just keep doing that and we'll just keep, I, I, I would have to assume the cheapest way is what we're doing now. The, I think that, um, residents probably would use that chipping service more and if we got a decent deal out of it, it's probably worth at least trying once, so we can look in at quotes and, and then, you know, see if that's something we wanna budget for next year. You know, uh, that would be my suggestion. I don't wanna compost and store, that place down there is already, and I can't keep up with getting down there to...
Well, with the mulch, probably you gotta, you gotta constantly moving that around.
I mean, you just get into a lot of things that, you know, and already, the place is already a disaster admittedly, so I, um, we gotta get down, that, it needs some attention down there as it is, so I don't really wanna start that right now.
Okay. Moving on, there are reports of municipal boards and commissions, planning commission, Mr. Hips.
No report this evening.
Recreation board, recreation.
Mayor, while we're on.
Yes.
Planning commission, just thinking, I mean, the overlay district committee, since there's no planning commission meeting, is that something we might wanna do next Wednesday or if everyone's available or we're now?
It's fine, it's fine with me.
I can make it.
Ellen's checking. And it wouldn't be to meet with any of the candidates, it would just have the committee to have a first meeting and.
I'm good.
Figure out what we're gonna, what time?
You're chairing it.
Six.
That's right.
Okay. All right, great, thanks.
Recreation board, Matt, um, I think everything went well for the garage sale this year. You know, I think it always goes well. I mean, you're always gonna have complaints on anything you do, but I think it mostly was positive. We might have one or two complaints, um, that I had. I don't know if you had any, Jason?
I had the same one you had.
Yeah, okay.
I understand.
So, um, that went very well. Um, the next thing they've been talking about is, uh, block parties for the wards, so they wanna do that in July. Um, we're gonna be having another meeting. When's that? What's that date, Renell?
July sixth.
July sixth at seven-thirty here at the town hall. So. Um, moving on, cemetery board, Mrs. Greenlee is not present. Uh, Mr. President, do you have a report for Mrs. Greenlee?
Uh, yes, I do. Mr. Mayor, um, Mrs. Greenlee said hello to everyone. Um, they hired, uh, an outside firm to tidy up the cemetery, probably pick up the debris, the trees, the, the raking of the leaves to get ready for summertime. Um, the trustees did approve a budget and it was presented at the Macedonia, uh, council meeting. And the next board meeting for the cemetery will be Thursday, May twenty-fifth at seven o'clock at the Macedonia Town Hall. Yep, yep, I'm sorry. That's, I should have supposed to cross that out. I'm sorry. I'm just reading it off there. But everything was, uh, they're getting a contractor for the painting of the fence and, um, uh, a- again, they hired an outside firm to come in and tidy up the cemetery. Uh, Macedonia, at their last council meeting, they presented their, their budget. My apologies. Thank you very much, Mr. Renell. Lost track of time the last two weeks. Uh, that completes the report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on, reports of the city committees, finance, Mr. Magistrelli.
Uh, we had a finance meeting today, um, from our last meeting, so we're, we, uh, everything was paid and paid on time. Thank you, Mrs. Ingrascia. Uh, again, I, I will say that our finance meetings are improving every time. They're becoming easier and easier and, uh, I, I, we appreciate everything. Um, our next meeting is the twenty-eighth of this month. We were having two because we, uh, we lost it last month.
We lost it?
Yes. We talked earlier today, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I apologize. I've been, I've had one day off in thirty days and it's, uh, I'm trying to catch up. Uh, we wanna discuss the, uh, travel expenses for when we, uh, we send officers out, when we send our, our employees out for classes to, uh, meal ticket, we may say. Uh, we, we, we've, uh, we wanna up that, so if we're sending them to a class to, uh, or, or training for the village, we, uh, we pay for their breakfast, lunch, and their dinner and we'll have a limit. Uh, I think we discussed, Mrs. Ingrascia, what, what do we finally come up with that we thought was a good number?
The current limit is like fifteen percent of the total bill. Um, I would like to change that because I don't think it's reasonable or fair since we're, you know, having these people further educate themselves. So I'd like to see it go fifteen dollars for breakfast, twenty for lunch, twenty-five for dinner, maximum. So, does anybody have any? Yeah, like a per, well, that's what Sergeant Zolga just, Zolga's just said is maybe we should just do a per diem amount.
It's usually what I...
Instead of, uh, it's up to, it's up to council, whichever you prefer.
A lot of people do do it per different rates per meal, so it's, it's done both ways, so whatever council prefers.
I'm gonna make a suggestion that we go to a daily per diem. Uh, we'll just, they, uh, have that amount and they could, they may wanna ma- spend thirty for breakfast 'cause they like Bob Evans and they wanna go to Wendy's for lunch. I, I think, I think that's a good idea. We'll just go to the per diem. That's the same way that we do it where we're at, so. And I would like to make a motion to make that a sixty-dollar per diem per day.
Second.
Right, we'll have to do an ordinance, but, but for now, that can be effective, but I will, uh, get the legislation done, Mr. Magistrelli. Okay, thank you.
That concludes your report?
That concludes my report. Thank you very much and I do apologize.
That's quite all right. Roads and public works, Mr. Doherty.
No report, Mayor.
Health and welfare, Mrs. Noack.
No report, Mayor.
Wages and working conditions, Mr. Voitosh is not present. Does anyone have in that committee have anything for us tonight? Hearing none, moving on. Fire and safety, Mrs. Tomsalski.
No report this evening.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Hips.
No report.
Moving on to legislation, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. First is, uh, two thousand seventeen thirty-three, an emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a software agreement with TAC Computer, Inc. for the software used by the police department on second reading. It, we put it on second reading originally to straighten out the, uh, annual maintenance fee issues, which were taken care of and, um, I believe the police department wants to move forward with that at this time.
I'd like to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Tomsalski, seconded by Mr. Doherty to suspend the three reading rule. Um, all in favor? Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to pass by Ms. Tomsalski, seconded by Mr. Doherty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Resolution is adopted. Next is two thousand seventeen thirty-six, an emergency ordinance establishing chapter ten forty-eight of the codified ordinances relating to the use of public ways by service providers on second reading. It's my recommendation this stays on second reading. It has been reviewed by the planning commission. Um, by law, we have to send this ordinance to the Ohio, um, Public Utilities Commission to be on file for, um, companies to comment on, um, for, I believe it's a forty-five day period. So I will do so and at the end of that period, um, we can review the comments, if any, and decide how to move forward with it at that time. Next is two thousand seventeen thirty-seven, an emergency ordinance enacting section two thirty-two point zero-three of the codified ordinances establishing the position of part-time office assistant. Um, my recommendation on this, Mayor and Council, is to leave this on first reading. Um, when we go through the interview process, as far as the candidates, we may figure out, um, exactly how we wanna handle the position and that may evolve depending on the, the candidates and their strengths and availability. So we just need to make sure we get that passed before the person is hired, so that, that's my recommendation, Mr. Magistrelli, on that. Um, next is two thousand seventeen thirty-eight, an emergency resolution authorizing certain amendments to the two thousand seventeen appropriation resolution and/or transferring items already appropriated in that resolution on first reading. Um, Ms. Ingrascia described, uh, the amendments in that legislation. Does anyone have any questions about them? Um, is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Mr. Hips. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Noack. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? The resolution is adopted. The light is on. Okay, I'll speak louder. Um. Uh, two thousand seventeen forty, or actually, two thousand seventeen thirty-nine, sorry, an emergency resolution establishing a new fund known as the Property Improvements Fund within the financial records of the village on first reading. And, I don't know, Ms. Ingrascia, if you wanna explain this?
Uh, this is what, uh, was requested, well, I'm assuming what was requested with the savings of, for building improvements and, um, we, we discussed it at budget time, so.
Is there a motion to suspend the three reading?
Motion. Mr. Brad.
Motion by Mr. Hips, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. All in favor?
Nope, that's backwards.
Try this one out.
Check, test. All right, all in favor of suspending the three reading rule?
Yes.
All opposed? Good. Is there a motion to pass?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Magistrelli, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hips. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Good, the resolution is adopted. Next is two thousand seventeen forty, an emergency resolution establishing a new fund known as the hydrant maintenance fund within the financial records of the village on first reading. It's my understanding, um, we wish to keep this on first reading. We're still trying to work out the details.
Mr. Brian, I, we're, we're, we're doing that right now. I think, uh, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three readings.
We are, do we wanna do? Okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay, I stand corrected. Uh, motion by Mr. Magistrelli to suspend the three reading rule. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hips. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Cut, is there a motion to pass?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hips to pass, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Good, that resolution is adopted. Next is two thousand seventeen forty-one, an emergency resolution authorizing Euthenics, Inc. to complete the final design work for the Ledge Road reconstruction phase two project on first reading. Um, is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
So moved?
Second.
Motion to pass by Ms. Noack, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Next is, uh, two thousand seventeen forty-two, an emergency resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer for police department use on first reading. And this was previously discussed in the work session. It's my understanding the police department has decided that they wish to go forward with just one of the two vehicles at this time and reevaluate, uh, in the fall where their budget's at. Is that correct, Mr. Zolga? and reevaluate, uh, in the fall where their budget's at. Is that correct, Mr. Zolga?
Correct, correct.
I'd like to suspend the three reading rule.
Motion by Ms. Tomzowski. To suspend the three reading rule, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to pass by Ms. Tomzowski, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? And the resolution is adopted. Next is two thousand seventeen forty-three, an emergency resolution confirming the mayor, director of public safety's appointment of Craig Wilson as a full-time police officer on first reading. Is there a motion to suspend the three reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Tomzowski. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Tomzowski to pass, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Resolution is adopted. And last is, um, two thousand seventeen forty-four, an emergency ordinance amending section four fifty-two point zero-three of the traffic code relating to parking violations on first reading. And if everyone will remember, uh, we did do extensive amendments to the parking ordinance chapter. This would relate to section four fifty-two point zero-three only, adding in, um, subsection twenty. It states, "On any grass portion of property located within or on a village park or village-owned property, or any grass portion of property adjacent to the roadway abutting a village park or village-owned property unless specifically authorized by the director of public safety, the chief of police, or their designated..." So again, this would just try to make sure there's no ambiguity that, um, if you're parking in front of a park or municipal-owned property, your car is off the roadway portion, under the grass portion, you are in violation.
I'd like to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Motion to suspend the three reading rule by Ms. Tomzowski, seconded by Mr. Doherty. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to pass by Ms. Tomzowski, seconded by Mr. Doherty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Okay, and that is it for the legislation, Mayor.
At this time, is there any old business, new business or announcements?
Mayor, I just have one. John, I would like you to, um, thank Lieutenant Mackey for volunteering for Tessa's fundraiser this weekend. It was nice to see that the village was represented for that. Thank you.
I will do that tomorrow.
I just want to, um, you know, say that, you know, the passing of Brent Summer, um, in such a tragic, um, floating accident, um, our thoughts and prayers go out to him and his, out to his family, so.
Mayor, um, under new business, uh, I would like to call for an executive session, uh, with department heads for just a short meeting.
It's my understanding, Mr. Doherty, that has to do with the personnel matter?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have any other business or announcements to conduct before, uh, good? So, Mr. Doherty is making a motion to go into executive session and invite the department heads to stay for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tomzowski. A roll call vote, Ms. Noack?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Magistrelli? Yes. Mr. Hips?
Yes.
Ms. Tomzowski?
Yes.
Good. Um, for the audience, we will not be conducting any further business, uh, except for, except to adjourn, um, at the end of the meeting, so, thank you.